Okay, call the order. Welcome to the October 6th City Council, the City of Crescent City Open Session. Do we have anything to report from closed session?
No action to report.
Thank you. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Greenow.
I am here.
Councilmember Tinkler.
Here.
Mayor Altman.
I'm here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thanks, everyone. See. Okay ceremonial items. We have four proclamations tonight. What I'm going to do is I will read and sign and present the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. Councilmember Greenell will read the Fire Prevention Week proclamation. And then Councilmember Tinkler will read the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. And then I will do the Bully Prevention Month proclamation. Okay, start with Indigenous Peoples. Which is coming up here soon. Okay. Whereas the City of Crescent City recognizes that the lands known as the Americas have been occupied by Indigenous Peoples since time immemorial. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a day to celebrate the Indigenous Peoples who call California home and who preserve in the face of unimaginable challenges to shape California's past, present, and future. And whereas Peoples indigenous to California have survived the forces of systematic and legalized oppression, violence, and discrimination, including a government-funded effort to erase them from existence known as the War of Extermination, the criminalization of their culture and language, the taking of their homelands, and the forced separation of families through legal slavery and forced enrollment in boarding school. And whereas Crescent City was founded upon the ancestral homelands and villages of the Talawa-Dani in place, in a place named Ta'atun, long before it was incorporated as a city in 1854. Whereas the 1850s were particularly brutal period in Delnort County as several organized attacks on Talawa villages resulted in the deaths of hundreds of men, women, children, and elders, with the Yontucket assault being the second largest massacre of Indigenous Peoples on American soil. And whereas acknowledging this brutal past as part as our collective history is an essential step toward, excuse me, toward healing and gaining a better understanding of our Indigenous community. And whereas Southern Delnort County is the ancestral home of the Yorick Peoples who constitute an integral part of both our region's history and the current community that is Crescent City. And whereas the city recognizes the value of the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous Peoples' knowledge, labor, spirituality, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that have substantially shaped the character of Crescent City. And whereas the City of Crescent City promotes the closing of the equity gap for Indigenous Peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of Indigenous Peoples, ensuring greater access and opportunity and honoring our nation's Indigenous history and contributions. And whereas three years ago, the city invited representatives from the Talawa-Dani Nation, the Elk Valley Rancheria, and the Talawa Nation to serve on the Talawa Cultural Committee to consult and advise on certain city projects, particularly those related to the Beachfront Park Master Plan. And whereas the Talawa Cultural Committee has worked tirelessly with the city staff and consultants to create the Talawa Cultural Trail, an interpretive walk where Talawa history and culture are shared by the Talawa Peoples along a rebuilt coastal pathway in Beachfront Park. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that City Council of the City of Crescent City recognizes Monday, October 13, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And be it further proclaimed that the City of Crescent City shall continue its efforts to partner with Talawa-Dani to promote the prosperity and well-being of the local Indigenous community. And be it further proclaimed that Indigenous People's Day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of Indigenous Peoples on this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that Indigenous Peoples add to our city. And be it further proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Crescent City encourages other businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Signed on the sixth day of October, 2025.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And we do have a representative from the Yorick Tribe. From the North District, we have Philip Williams.
Welcome.
Pushing a button, we're rolling. With a much gratitude, thank you for inviting me here today. I was born and raised in this community. In this moment, you're taking us out of being invisible and bringing us to the forefront. As a member of the Yorick Tribe, council member and leader of the Yorick Tribe. I'm so honored to be representing them. Also recognizing what my tribe and my people bring to the community. You know, when I was here young, as a young man, there was no Yorick Tribe. But now we've grown. We add a lot of value to this community. We bring dollars into this community, much-needed dollars here. But for us, we're looking to uplift the entire community with us. And we've overcome a lot of adversity. You mentioned some of the things in your proclamation, you know, in 1848, we were about 7,000 people here in the Yorick Tribe. 1880, we're down to 600. So the rest of us that are living, we have to carry on the honors and traditions of our ancestors. And I hope that I'm living my life in honor of them. So I just want to recognize this board, bringing us to the forefront. I also want to mention this man here, he's been really respectful to myself. I've had conversations about our issues and how we feel about the land and recognition. And he has listened. Also seen him take down criminals in town by himself. And I said, we need a leader like that. But I just wanted to say thankful, how grateful I am to be here today. So, thank you. Walk out.
Are there any other representatives?
No, Mayor, I don't think we have any other representatives here tonight. But I did receive emails from both the Elk Valley Rancheria, as well as the Talawa-Dani Nation and Talawa Nation, just in gratitude for this proclamation, the partnership. And then from myself on a personal level, gratitude right back to them, their tribal councils, and all of their efforts in bringing this park project that we've been working on now for years to reality, to tell the history that is, that is, that is here in Crescent City, acknowledge those things that did happen in the past, and then move forward with some of the healing that needs to take place, and then move forward together in the future. Also, just like to say a deep appreciation for Yorick Tribal Councilmember Philip Williams for being here and those kind words and encouragement as we do move forward together as a community.
Thank you. Well, I do have other proclamations here that we will get to the other tribes. And, but I would like to present this one to Philip, so. Okay, next on the agenda is the Fire Prevention Week proclamation. I do not have the official proclamation up here, or do I? I don't? No, Jason has a copy, but I will, where's the chief? Is chief here? I will present you with that handshake, sir.
Right. And with this, I will read this proclamation in honor of our Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Crescent City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Crescent City and visiting. And whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in a home daily include smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action. Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use of such overcharging using off-brand chargers without safety certification and/or exposing batteries to damage can result in a fire explosion. And whereas the proper disposal of recycling of ion batteries, lithium ion batteries, help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas the Crescent City first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Protection Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safely. Safety. Lithium ion batteries in your home serves to remind us of the importance of using charging and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Crescent City do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, the 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Crescent City, California.
Good job. Thanks for the help. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Altman and the council. Thank you for recognizing this week. As I get one extra year every year in my fire service career, I really do understand the value and the benefit to the community of fire prevention, training, preparation, and getting our youth involved. We have our explorers here tonight. But teaching them all those safety things that have come from tragedies, it's very important. So thank you for recognizing that. We have an event that I invited Captain Reno here to talk about coming up. And it's going to be a great community event to get some of that education out there. But again, thank you for that leadership and recognition. And if you wouldn't mind, we'll have a few words from Captain Reno here.
Mayor Altman. City Council, thank you again. You know, you're talking about lithium ion batteries and stuff like that. You know, there's been about 25,000 incidents that are documented from 2017 to 2022. There's not any current updated thing. So talk about that. That's an actual real emergency. You think about all the incidents that have happened between that timeframe. So it is good to talk about Fire Prevention Week and stuff like that. Firefighter Sotomayor and Firefighter Reno are actually going to be taking my place this weekend because I'm actually out right now. But at Home Depot this Saturday from two, or sorry, from 10 to two, we'll be having a Fire Prevention Disaster Preparedness Expo. We will have a boatload of agencies that are going to be there along with the Crescent City Police Department, CAL FIRE. Weather Pending will actually have their new Firehawk helicopter, a dozer team, and a hand crew. Our department will be represented with multiple pieces of equipment as well. Pelican Bay State Prison's coming in, they're going to teach how to use fire extinguishers. Pacific Power, Blue Star Gas, Red Cross, County OES, Sheriff's Department, and a whole multitude of a lot of other people that are going to be there to show what this is. Home Depot is graciously sponsoring the event. They are going to have their kids clinic there as well. So they'll be able to build, what are they building this year?
I'm pretty sure it's fire helicopter.
Yeah. So they're doing a bunch of things in partnership with us. This is a several-year project that's been going on. The process starts, just to kind of give you guys an idea how much effort goes into this, we start planning this in June or October. There's a lot that goes into it, getting everybody involved and getting all of our partners involved. And it was a very well-received event last year, and I'm hoping this year. We did have some weather last year, like we're supposed to have weather this year. So hopefully, we're going to have a really good event. Firefighter Reno, hopefully she'll get what she wants to do, where it'll be a small obstacle course for the little ones to kind of come through and hopefully put out a small fire on our prop house that we have. So again, if you guys are able to make it this Saturday from 10 to two, Home Depot, it'd be a great event. I know the city has other events going on that weekend too, so I do apologize. But it will be a great event for both events. So if you guys can make both of them, that'd be great. Thank you.
And hopefully you guys left us some parking spots.
There are a few.
I don't think there's anything such thing as a city having too many good fun things for kids to do on a Saturday.
Yeah, absolutely. And this is just another small snippet of the dedication that our volunteers at this department, you know, taking months and months out of their private time to plan something for the community. We just, day in, day out, that's what we experience with our folks. So special shout out to that. And I stood here last year on this proclamation date and said, my goal is to inspect every business in the city every year. And we're well on the way. Captain Smith, we're just finishing up all the hotels and apartment complexes and schools. It's a large task with two paid individuals on every day. But I'm standing here to tell you, we're going to do everything we can to meet that request from last year. So.
Yeah. All right, let me give that handshake. Thank you all for everything that you do for our community to keep us safe. Well, I've said it many times, we have the best fire department in the world. I mean it. Constantly impressing us. It's really amazing. Okay, let's move on to, and you guys, you asked to stay for the whole two hours. Especially you, Captain Smith. Thank you very much for coming. Okay. Our third proclamation this evening is Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Thanks for helping me.
Okay, I'm proud to read this one. A proclamation of the City of Crescent City. Whereas nearly one in three women and one in four men in our country have suffered physical violence by an intimate partner, and domestic violence impacts people of every age, ethnicity, nationality, economic status, and belief. And whereas victims of domestic violence are deprived of autonomy and security, face threats to their health and safety, and in many cases, instances, find themselves left with significant financial insecurity. And whereas crimes like domestic violence inhibit our community from reaching its fullest potential. And although great progress in bringing awareness to and providing protections against domestic violence has been made, much work remains. And whereas the city affirms its dedication to providing a community where no one suffers the pain and hardship caused by domestic violence, and recognizes the advocates, victim service providers, and organizations who work tirelessly to prevent domestic violence and extend hope and healing to survivors and victims of domestic violence. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Crescent City do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge that we rededicate ourselves to upholding the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse.
Thank you. Good job. And tonight, we have Amy Carlson to accept the proclamation. Amy?
Well, my name's Amy. I'm a domestic violence advocate at the Harrington House. So I just prepared a small speech. Thank you, council, for this meaningful proclamation. On behalf of Harrington House, I'm honored to accept this, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This gives visibility to the tireless work our advocates do who provide critical support services every day. And we're honored to be a part of a wide collaborative of agencies that work together to support survivors and make change in our community. By officially recognizing this issue, you're sending a clear message that domestic violence will not be tolerated in Crescent City. And I'd like to salute the survivors for their strength, courage, and resilience in the face of their imaginable hardship. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And the clerk is going to get you a original copy of that proclamation. We don't have it this evening, but appreciate all you do over there. Okay, are we ready for the next one? Bully Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation or harm intentionally directed at a person or group of people and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, on the job, and through technology. And whereas research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence, annually affecting thousands of California children and adolescents. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims the month of October, 2025, as Bully Prevention Month. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Crescent City encourage all schools, students, parents, recreational programs, religious institutions, and community businesses and organizations become engaged in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safe for all children, adolescents, and adults. Start with supporting a friend who is getting bullied, to move from being a bystander to becoming an upstander when they witness someone being bullied. And do we have?
Mayor. Mayor Altman, Gordon Clay could not be here tonight, so he gave me his address and I'll be mailing it to him.
Okay, so we'll make sure and get her a original copy.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Serious business. Let's see, where are we at? No, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on and read the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest on or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the podium are out of order and will not be part of public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action taken by the council. Do we have any public comment at this time? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Susan Roberts. I live in Crescent City. And I would like to make an acknowledgement and make a request. I would like to acknowledge last council meeting where you had a moment of silence for the murder of Charlie Kirk. And I would like to have us to have a similar, but perhaps much longer moment of silence for the over 500 children who are killed by guns in schools by, who knows? Not only do we lose the child, but we lose the whole family. We lose the whole community. Everyone is affected by it. And particularly the child who happens to see or be in the classroom at that time or next to it, and sees the mayhem, sees the amount of horrific results. What if we had today at Crescent Elk, a shooter come in and killed 23 people? Kids, everyone in this room and everyone listening would know exactly who they were, what soccer team they were on, who their family was, everyone would be impacted. So I would like to have the rest of my time spent in a moment of silence, prayer, meditation, to think about the killing of children in classrooms or anywhere. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Number one is warrant claims list. Number two is the council meeting minutes from September 15th and September 29th. Number three is payroll report. Number four is budget to actual summary as of August 31st. Number five is Metabook Preliminary Engineering Report Contract Award and Budget Amendment Resolution. Number six is amendment number nine to Agreement for Operations Maintenance and Management Services for Wastewater Treatment Plant with Operations Management International Incorporated, or Jacobs. And number seven is. And number seven is Voting Delegate Designation for the League of California Cities 2025 Annual Conference. Counsel, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing that.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
And I will second that.
Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Agenda item number eight is Technical Assistance Planning Grant, amendment number two for the design of the wastewater treatment plant, rotating biological contractor, capital upgrade membrane bioreactor replacement and biosolids digester optimization project. Boy, when you need an acronym.
That's what I was going to say. I apologize for the short title of this one. But it is a, it certainly is a project that is going to be vital when we talk about the city's, city's future, just in general. When you, when we talk about projects like beachfront park and economic development, what really goes before that is infrastructure. And that is making sure that we have the infrastructure to support those things. And that is our streets, that's infrastructure with police, it's fire, but it's also wastewater and water. Those are critical facilities that us as a city provide to this community. And it is some of our, our most critical assets that we have. And they are, they're assets that take a lot of responsibility, but also the technology that, that it takes nowadays is constantly evolving. And so what's before you tonight is a project report to make sure that we set ourselves up correctly for the future. And so with me tonight, we have Austin Nova. Austin is the plant manager or project manager for Jacobs Engineering here in Crescent City. Austin started actually as a city employee, as an operator in training and has worked his way up to be managing that plant now for Jacobs. And we're really fortunate to have him. Also with me tonight, we have a couple of people on Zoom. We have Jasmine DS, you can see on your screen there. And then we also have Barbara Andrew. And Jasmine and Barbara are the lead team in the project management for the, this upgrade project that's before you. So tonight is basically the project report. This is something that we've been working on for several years and has evolved over time. So as we, as we walk through it, first, what's before you tonight is one to adopt this final project report. So sort of the first step in what we need to do next to make sure we have a sustainable treatment plant that fulfills our community's needs. And then there's a couple of resolutions that go along with that. And those are required resolutions for us to achieve state water board funding, which is a critical driver in this whole process to one, understand what we need to do and but then also have the funding to be able to implement it. So first, why, why do we care, right, about the wastewater treatment plant? And a lot of people, it's, it is truly amazing what goes into a wastewater treatment plant in order to have clean water come out on the other side. It would just, it goes along with just modern technology and society. We're able to flush the toilet, it goes away, we don't ever think about it again, right? And isn't that wonderful? Because it certainly is not very nice when, when that doesn't happen. In order to turn on your water, right, and have clean water come out. Those are things we take for granted. That doesn't just happen. It happens with projects like this. It happens with forefront planning. It happens because of our public works crews and their, their maintenance activities to make that day in, day out, modern convenience a reality to us. It also comes with responsibility that we have, that we don't have impacts on our beautiful natural resources. Our wastewater treatment plant discharges right into the Pacific Ocean. If we don't have that treatment plant and what that treatment plant does, we will have pretty severe impacts to our water quality and, and the aquatic and plant life that's associated with it. We have wonderful fishing and crabbing and whatnot. We have a responsibility to make sure that that ocean is clean and the water that discharges from the plant is clean as well. So that's, that's what it means by address compliance with new NPDS permit limits. So NPDS is an acronym that you will hear quite a bit as well. That's National Pollutants Discharge Elimination System. So that basically means that we are going to try to remove as many of the pollutants as we can to have good water quality. We want to be, we want to have a project that has resiliency for future regulations. One of the, the rules that they have when it comes to water quality regulations is there is no backsliding. So they don't get easier, the requirements only get harder. And that's, that's what we're seeing here. We have infrastructure that is aging. Most of the treatment plant, at least a lot of the things that we're going to be addressing was put in either when the original treatment plant was built in the early 1950s, like 1953, 1958, to the 1970s, which now is 50-year-old infrastructure that we're still using today to meet our compliance. And then we want to try to make sure that we support our community with, with not having as, you know, the least impacts we can on the rate payers themselves, which is we're in a good shape or right now, or at least there's opportunities for possibly up to $50 million in grants. $50 million for a treatment plant, sounds like a lot of money. It's really not when you're talking about the treatment plant. And we'll go through that with this project and everything we're doing to try to set ourselves up so that we can actually stay within that, that funding. That's potentially out there. Okay, so here's a shot of the wastewater treatment plant. We drive by it. This is where it all goes when you, when you flush. And this is what it looks like, very nice, but what is actually behind those walls? So this is a plan view diagram of the wastewater treatment plant itself. It includes headwork facilities, which, which we had some major rehab on. Trying to see if I can find my mouse. I can't find it on there. Anyway, it comes into the headworks, then goes through primary clarifiers, which allow for settling into what's called RBCs. And you'll hear about those a lot. Those are rotating biological contractors. Those were put in in the seventies. And then through secondary clarifiers to settle that out as well. There's a, there's another track that goes through an MBR that was built in our last treatment plant project, which was started in around 2007, completed around 2011. And that also helps, helps clean the water. And then we have to deal with the, with the solid stream side of things. So that is a general overview. Those are the, the main pieces of it. I will say that the city and the city council at the time had tremendous foresight with the MBR project. We're going to hear about tonight is adding another MBR to the treatment plant. MBR is technology that has now been proven and it is effective in meeting our treatment plant needs. So as we look at this, so the last major renovation was completed in 2011. And that was with an SRF loan, a state revolving loan fund through the, through the water board. And that added the MBR. The treatment plant itself, as we were going through that time, we tried for a, we went through a financial analysis and there was a rate increase that was put forth in motion by the city council at that time. There was a referendum that was placed on the ordinance. And so it basically stopped those rate increases from happening. We haven't had a rate increase since 2015, 10 years, without a single rate increase or increase in revenue from that. So we worked tirelessly through that, through that time period and even before the, the referendum to look at the, to look at the debt, ended up with a 0% interest debt, 30-year term from the original, which I believe was a 2.6% interest. Is it 2.6 or 2.4 20-year term? You look at the savings on that, it was actually $14 million in savings over the life of that loan because of the restructuring. However, time marched on and the treatment plant needs continue to grow. So that's where we, we partnered with Jacobs. So Jacobs actually took over the operations from the city. Treatment plants have become far, you know, the, the operation and maintenance of a treatment plant is very technical. It's very specialized. It's hard for a city trying to do only what cities do to also have a wastewater treatment plant. That's where it made a lot of sense to be able to partner with a firm like Jacobs that has hundreds of treatment plants and deals with regulations across the, across the state at multiple plants versus us trying to keep up and trying to maintain and operate a treatment plant with the various levels of complications and certifications that's required. So that's when we partnered with Jacobs 2019. And then as time continued to march on, we ended up securing 100% forgivable grant for this technical planning that has produced this project that's before you today to set ourselves up for the future. And as regulations have changed, which you'll see later on in this report, this project is very timely and it's very needed for us right now to move forward. So regulatory drivers, so we have our new NPDS permit. So the permit that regulates water quality that went into effect in February of 2024. It has new, much more stricter limits on bacteria. So when we talk about the two processes and I kind of glanced over it, but you have the RBCs, the rotating biological contractors, which is one process to help clean the water. And then you have the MBR. The MBR is membrane bioreactor. Like I said, the MBR does an excellent job of cleaning the water. The RBCs does an okay job of cleaning the water. And the okay job is not okay enough, for lack of a better term, for this new NPDS permit. So unless we're running 100% of the water through the MBR, which we cannot do because of the higher flows at all times, then we will have, we will have violations and those violations come with, come with fines. So this is what we've been dealing with over the last year. And now as we've, as I've talked to the council members individually on, we've had multiple violations and this is now added up to $228,000 in violations or fines. So that's what we're facing. We're looking at turning that into a compliance project. So we'll take those fines and we'll roll it into a project that we need to do that can help this treatment plan out. Because of those violations, though, it also puts us into a different category for funding. We're in a priority category. So now instead of being possibly eligible for, I think it was only 15 million at the time, it puts us in this $50 million category to actually address some of these. And that is the, the order of magnitude that we actually need for this project and to address the needs of this treatment plant. So as we move forward, we're working with the state to, to try to, to try to get this funding to put us in a position. State has also issued what's called a time schedule order. It probably has abbreviated as a TSO. And what that does, it basically says, look, we realize you cannot meet this new permit. We are going to give you a five-year window in which to address it. And then there's a high likelihood that we'll be able to, or it's anticipated we'll be able to extend that for another five years. That 10-year window is really what you need to address a project like this. Get it into final design, go after the money, get the money and then be able to build the project. So the timeframe, the windows all work, but it is a good thing that we're in a position that we are tonight to have this project report as we had to switch gears in the middle of this project in order to make sure we were able to meet this NPDS permit and then also look towards the future to try to anticipate water quality needs in the future. This one's going to be a little bit hard to read, especially from this, from this podium, but basically it gives you an idea of the, of the overall timeframe. So you can see to your, to your left, kind of at the very top of this chart is when the treatment plant was first built, so 1958. And then as those major upgrades have come into play. So in the seventies, that's when the RBCs were put in place. And then we had our major project in 2007, 2011. That's when we added the MBR. What's been a driving factor on this treatment plan and the upgrades that are, that are required are what you see there with a, with a cease and desist order is what some of those first, those first little diamonds are. And so a cease and desist order is what they issued to us, I believe it was in 1997. It was the first date and then there was, there was additional ones. And that's again, because the treatment plant was not meeting its regulatory responsibilities and didn't have projects like this working its way into the, into the future to do that. So at that point in time, they basically said you couldn't connect any new connections. And then they worked on this and we only had a certain number of connections. As we completed the project in 2011, they rescinded that cease and desist order. We talked about economic development. We talked about some of these things and housing and whatnot, as well as even just meeting our current permit for what we currently have onboard. Projects like this putting ourselves in good positions for the future is essential. So the, the blue diamond that you see is when the cease and desist was, was lifted after our last project. And then we start to move our way through, through the project that we, that we have before you now with the, with the first stage sort of being the, this, this project report. The other ones are actually in regard to the, to the permit that was, that was put on us in 2024. And then the time schedule order, those are going to be key dates as well as we, as we try to address those things. This is a little bit of a, of a larger view of that same last slide where you're just looking at the regulatory piece of it. So again, cease and desist all the way through the new NPDS into the, into our, our time schedule order and then our current project. Okay, so existing challenges of the treatment plant. So the plant can meet its limits when the flows are less than 1.1. So when we talk about flush your toilet and goes away, actually a million gallons comes to the treatment plant and that's in the summer months. During some of the storms and the, the wet weather conditions, that goes up to about 2 million on a, on a regular basis. And then during some storms, we can see as high as six, seven, even eight million gallons per day running through that treatment plant. Thanks to, to the hard work for our public work crew as well as Austin and his team, right? And they're able to manage those flows and, and not impact our, our quality of life. However, with this new permit, the RBCs cannot meet that. So how we're handling those larger flows is one, about 1 million, 1.1, 1.2 goes through the MBR. The rest goes through the RBCs. Those two flows then come together and it met the requirements of our permit from 2011 all the way until just this last permit, where they tightened up the, the rules on the bacteria. So that's a challenge. There are also challenges. We only have one MBR. And so even though there are, there are a couple of different trains in that to run it at full capacity and get that 1.1, 1.2 million gallons per day out of the MBR, we have to run it at full capacity. So not having redundancy is a, is one of the things we wanted to address. And then also just the fact that the other components of the treatment plant, a lot of them were put in and some are, are dated all the way back to the 50s. Some are in the seventies, right there, just way past their useful life and they need to be upgraded. And then to make matters worse, it is in the tsunami zone. And so there are requirements when it comes to being in the tsunami zone. Now, treatment plant is higher than what you might think, being right there on the beach. It's at about a 20-foot in elevation. So the treatment plant did not get hit by the 1964 tsunami. But if there is a cascade event or a large one, it could be hitting. And so that is something that we need to, we need to keep in mind, at least with how we comply with the current code. So when you look, this is a graph of the, of the flows and the, you can see those, those peaks during wet weather. So this is, this shows you the years between 2020 and 2024, where some of the largest flows come in the, the winter sort of storm times and what the MBR can treat, which is essentially during our dry weather. So in order to address that, we really need to add additional capacity to the MBR or our typical, our typical dry weather flows and then also have an ability to still address the wet weather and meet the permit. So the plant objectives is basically the, so this is a line diagram of the, of the treatment plant as it comes in and works its way through. So currently, right now, we only have one MBR, which is shown there in yellow as it comes in. So that's your depiction of a, of an MBR viewer. If you were curious on a line diagram, I know that fulfills a lot of your hopes and dreams. And so check that one off your, off your list. And the, the pink is the RBCs, which is, which is now an obsolete technology. They really don't even really make RBCs anymore. And so there has been times where people have actually come to our treatment plant just to see what an RBC is and see it's still functioning. So right, that's, yes, welcome, check it out. And then, but now obviously it doesn't meet our, doesn't meet our needs. So when we look at the different alternatives, there were several that we evaluated with this team because there, there are some different options, you know, adding MBRs and retrofitting one of the, the secondary clarifiers. So you're trying to use our infrastructure as much as we can. It's really the bottom line on this. And then where is that value truly going to come from? Because we cannot afford just to tear it all out and redo everything, right? We have to maximize everything that we can and try to take advantage of the technologies that we can implement on a feasible basis. So when you look at that, as we looked at the different options and we also looked at different criteria, right? What's the most important thing? Well, we have to be able to meet our NPDS discharge permit. And if we, if we aren't able to meet that after multimillion dollar project, that's, that's a problem. And then also the potential impact, right? We have to keep it feasible to this community. So what's out there in grants, what's out there in, in different funding scenarios? And then as that then rolls down, what are going to be the O and M costs of this? Because again, right, it's, it is about being able to not only meet the NPS permit, but to operate and maintain this plant. So you get the longevity, life cycle cost, right? All of those things were important factors as we tried to evaluate those. So those were the, sort of the, the rankings that we gave each of the different options that were out there. And in the end, we ended up with a selected alternative. And so that selective alternative is to utilize the RB, they're the secondary clarifiers in the space that's needed. So currently, right now, you have your RBCs, which is, which is located towards the bottom of the screen. And I wish I had my mouse, but I don't. So it's towards the bottom of the screen there. It's those three, those three trains at the very bottom. Those are where your RBCs sit. So how do we utilize that structure to be able to handle some more of that wet weather flows to some of the peaking flows? And then what currently happens is as it flows through the RBCs, that's when you need your secondary clarifiers, which is where you see the purple, the blue and the red. So if we don't have the RBCs, then we don't really need the secondary clarifiers in their current form. So the idea is to utilize one of the secondary clarifiers. So there's three currently right now. So the idea is to utilize one of the secondary clarifiers. So there's three currently right now. Use one for a new MBR system. And so again, we'll be able to utilize that area, put the new MBR infrastructure in there. The MBR building that's actually just to the, to the top of the screen, right? Right past that has a lot of the pumps and a lot of the housing. There's enough space in there to put additional pumps and blowers and whatnot. So we can actually utilize that space as well. Help operate this new MBR. And then you have, uh, sort of the, the middle train there, which which just is showing us some solid storage. So as it comes through is the other part that's a bottleneck for us is where do we, what do, how do we handle our solids as it's coming through? Before we can get that out of the plant, so there'll be some storage there. And then the last train will be used as filters. So we're going to put in the RBC, in the RBC space, what's called attached growth. So it's a different type of RBC. And then that'll be able to run through those filters. Once it goes through the filters, then it'll meet the water quality we, uh, that we need in order to be able to run uh, in accommodation with the MBR. So that in a very high nutshell is really what this project is going to do. You look at it in a, in a line diagram, this is a, another shot of the existing, right? And really this bottom one is showing the addition of the new MBR and that attached growth with the, with the filter coming after it. So that's, that's it in a flow diagram. Taking it just sort of at a, at a high level to summarize this report, which is well over a hundred pages. There'll be some improvements to the digesters. So increasing the, uh, the, the digester itself, so having an extension on there, about a two-foot extension, uh, increasing the, or doing some modifications to the HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, as well as, uh, getting the, uh, some improvements to the, to the covers and boilers. So they can actually run in uh, in series, uh, and so that'll allow for more effective, uh, digestion on the solid side of things. You look at the primaries, again, the primaries are, are, were built uh, in the, in the 50s and upgraded in the seventies. And so rehab on the, on the primary clarifiers, but for the most part that are going to stay the same where that'll be just act as your, as your primary, uh, sterilization tank. Uh, the dewatering building. So look at the HVAC on that and potential replacement of the belt press. So that, that a belt press is another key component of, of actually getting the solids out of the plant itself and trying to de-water them as much as you possibly can. So you're not paying just for that water weight, but to actually treat that water and get it out. Uh, so just looking at some of the options, an actual redundancy of the belt presses not included right now in the cost estimate, but we do want to look at maybe some of the alternatives that are there. The MBR building we talked about, so additional equipment in the existing MBR building to support the new MBR. That's the really great thing about this project as proposed is again, trying to utilize everything we can to keep these costs down and keep it as efficient as possible. It also keeps it within the same footprint. So when we're talking about coastal development and coastal requirements, that'll be a lot easier to get this project permitted and get it built by keeping everything within the existing footprint. Talked a little bit about the, the RBC area. So this is a highlight of it, but this is to demolish the existing RBCs, do a restoration on the concrete, put in, uh, new blower housing additions, as well as then replace those RBCs with what's called an attached growth biological process. And the, all the electrical instrumentation associated with it. This is the current secondary clarifiers. That's what we talked about. So on one of the trains you had an MBR, the second one, you're going to add the, uh, the cloth filtration system. And then the third one, you will add uh, some digested sludge storage to help us handle this, the solid piece of it. So that in a, like you say, in a very high nutshell is the project. We do have, uh, we have Austin, we have Jasmine, and we have Barbara, uh, here that can go in more detail on that. I'll finish, uh, just this to give you an idea of what we're thinking schedule wise. And like I say, this, this is a timely project that we've been working on for a while. We're finally ready to, uh, to really hit some of these milestones and move it forward. So tonight is the project report. The next report that will come before you is just in a couple of months and that'll be the basis of design report. We have requested the board, uh, fund us with some additional money to get the project to a 60% design, complete value engineering. So we can try to pull this within our, within our funding that we think is available and then submit a funding application. So we're hoping that's going to happen by March. So we're talking in about six months, right? All of this is going to start to, uh, to start to roll out. Then once we get that and as part of that final design and construction funding and all that totals to that 50 million that we were talking about, that is available now for, for projects like this that have some of these NPDS, uh, violations. So again, these violations have put us in a really good spot to try to get the funding that we need. And then we would have detailed design and permitting, hopefully having that done by 2030. And then our construction window is 2030 to 2035. That's the project schedule. You look at it as a, uh, sort of a two-part. You have the regulatory in green. So when we talk about the TSO, that's that time schedule order. That puts us basically puts this new regulation that's in our NPDS permit on pause for five years. And then we're anticipating we can get another five years out of that. Uh, so that gives us this 10-year window. If you look at those other milestones we went over, the project will be completed by 2035, which coincides with, uh, with that time schedule order itself, uh, expiring. So that is the, uh, that is the project. Like you say, in a, uh, in a, a high level cost right now. And this is the, they call it a class five estimate. So this is just on the preliminary most probable is somewhere around 57 million, they're thinking to complete all of that, even with utilization of all the existing features and trying to, to make it as feasible as possible. However, that is a large range, like minus 20% all the way up to plus 50%. So that's where you get a range of 46 to 86 million. As we go through these various stages, that number's going to come down. And then especially if we can get value engineering incorporated, we're going to try to pull it down within our, uh, within our funding. We talked about we're eligible for 50 million. And then, uh, and then we're going to try to evaluate to try to get that, uh, try to get that, uh, the project within that funding that we think is available to us. So the application or the adoption tonight is this next step towards the process. So with that, I will pause. Want to take a little bit of breath myself, but then too, to give you, uh, an opportunity to ask questions. Like you say, we have, we have the experts with us on Zoom. We have Austin Plan Operations. He can talk all about who, what, where, when he, if you want to know about a treatment plant, that is the guy to talk to.
So, um, I'll tell you what, I'm thankful that the state was thinking ahead and actually had a solution for us and not just coming at us with the stick because a lot of times, unfortunately with, uh, these regulatory agencies, they don't always come with a solution. They just say, uh, you have a problem, fix it and it's on our dime. Um, so I'm very thankful that these violations are actually going to turn into a long-term solution in the $50 million shoot grant. That's huge. So, uh, with that, you brought in an interesting point about being in the tsunami zone. So does this project have any upgrades that have to do with hardening the existing structure to improve our situation in the case of a tsunami?
It, it looks at it from a tsunami code standpoint and trying to utilize existing structure. So I think there's some limited pieces of that. But it's going to be hard. Like I say, it's the, the tsunami that you really need to design for is the Cascadia event, which is a 50-foot tsunami every, I want to say it's, uh, tsunami every, what do they, they think the Cascadia is about three to 400 years is the last Cascadia event and one at 50 feet. Cause there's different levels, even the Cascadia, I want to say was one in every, uh, 2,500 years. I'd say that's a big ask and the design requirements for something like that would be tremendous. And so I think long-term on that, we really need to be thinking about an alternative site. So that's a lot easier said than done. And we're talking a $50 million project to do this, a project like that. I don't even know the order of magnitude that we would need to, uh, to try to facilitate something like that.
That, that was actually one of my questions was, I guess, I guess I knew the answer would be astronomical, but as long as doing all this work, you know, would be, there be some benefit to looking at that option of let's move this. Even though I kind of geek out about wastewater treatment, I think it's actually really, really interesting. It's so complicated. Um, I will have to admit, the, the non-geek in me has always been a little disturbed that some of the best real estate in our entire city, right there at the park is where the water wastewater treatment is and its associated smells and things. But, um, so what I'm hearing is we, we went the dream of moving it. First of all, I couldn't tell you where you could move it, that there wouldn't be someone saying not in my neighborhood. But, uh, I guess you answered the question. That's, it's beyond comprehension, really money-wise to think about moving it.
Yes and no, right? I mean, so you, you do need to start to think about it. Cause if you don't ever start to think about it, right? You're always going to be unprepared for it. And so as we look at our five-year capital improvement plan, you will see a, a project that's starting to look at potential sites. Right? Where, where could this site, uh, be at, right? As we go for additional grants to try to address that, that might be an option for us as well to look specifically at just that. What it'll take infrastructure wise is it all flows downhill to the treatment plant right now? And so you can't just take and just reverse all of your pipes, you know? So you're going to need some sort of piece of infrastructure there. So a smaller, you know, pump station that could be tsunami resistant to pump it to a treatment plant site that is basically north of Ninth Street, right? Is just sort of our line when it comes to that. And then you're going to need a large enough area to build this, this infrastructure and then funding to do it. So I mean, those, those pieces are, are many. But to start to look at it now, to start to build that, that grant infrastructure up and then look for hazardous mitigation, I think is something we will need to do. On a separate track from addressing the near term, which is on us right now of meeting these, these NPDS permit requirements and whatnot, because that is a much larger, much more extensive project that's going to take, you know, quite frankly, you know, decades, multiple decades to, to build. And so you do this now as, as feasible, as economically as you can, while starting to, uh, to paint that picture.
I guess that was my other question. Um, I was a little dismayed to see the construction actual, you know, getting, getting dirt moved is not until, uh, 2030. I guess my question is, you know, will we last that long? It seems like, you know, having toured the plant and knowing that some of those parts are pretty old and things. That just seems like a long time before we actually start making those improvements to me.
It is, you know, but we're almost to 2026. And so, you know, by the time we actually get this designed, it does take a couple of years on a treatment plan to actually get to design and then bid and, and then go and apply for the money and then get the money. So it's probably, if we start now, that's probably your most realistic timeframe, just, just speaking candidly. Now, this isn't the only thing that we want to do or need to do at the treatment plant. So we've also worked with Jacobs, their team to do a condition assessment. And as we look at our capital improvement plan for the next five years, there are still significant upgrades that we will be doing at the treatment plant that, that go along to just getting to this point and upgrading the facilities that aren't in this project.
Yeah, that's the unfortunate thing about government. It doesn't always move as quickly as we want it to. I mean, when I first started on the council, we had not done anything with Front Street. Front Street was completely in need of, uh, replacement of the, the concrete and a lot of different other issues having to do with drainage and different things. Over the course of the last nine years, we've been able to cobble together the funds to get it done. So it, I would have loved to do it year one, but unfortunately the funding and then the, the ability to get that all cobbled together isn't always readily available right when we would want it.
Yeah, it's a challenge. And like I say, we, there is an opportunity. The 50 million isn't guaranteed. So I don't want the council to think that that is, you know, in our back pocket at this point. Have to put ourselves in a position and then submit that, that, uh, that timely grant application. That changes over time, uh, but that is what would be available right now for us. That's where it's important to keep on a fast track right now and try to get that application submitted really as soon as possible. And because of those, that funding amount has changed and will change.
So I'm just taking a little clarification. So the, at the end of next month, you're going to try and get financial assistance, funding approval. And that's to roll the fine over to uh, get design, uh, environmental. In other words, get as close as you can to, uh, and so to speak, shovel ready to apply for the other financial assistance, which is, uh, the 50 million. But is that, is that more of like a loan?
No, it's, it's all forgivable, but it all does add into the, to the 50 million. So right now the state has given us 900 and approximately 930, $950,000 to get to this point and to get us through the basis of design report. And now what we've asked for is we've asked for another, basically another 2 million is what we've asked for. And that'll give us a study on the collection system, which I don't know if they're going to fund that part or not. And that's to the tune of about 500,000 and then an additional 1.5 million. The 1.5 million will take us from this basis of design report, which is what is in Jacob's current scope of work. And then get us to 60% with the environmental. That's the part that we really need to have pretty well dialed in to submit our funding request. So that's, that's what we're looking for the additional funding for. And then that'll give them the scope and capacity to do that. And hopefully also the value engineering to take us to that point. Once we put in our funding request with the state, we'll be, we'll, we'll have enough money at that point in time to get through the 60% and then once approved, then that will give us enough resources to then finish the design and, uh, hopefully put the project out to bid and then build it. It's not quite that simple. There's, you know, a lot of other moving parts that's, that's in there. And, you know, I was talking to our finance director and our city attorney a little bit today. 50 million sounds great and it's, you know, and it's needed. How we actually implement it and those nuances of cash flow will also be very important because we don't have the ability to just uh, put the money upfront and fund $50 million and then wait for reimbursement. So there's going to need to be some strategy, hopefully some programs from the state, something like that, as we start marching our way towards that.
Anything else from the council? Anything, any public comment?
We do have our consultants online of Arnie Ortech.
No, I, I don't.
Thank you, city manager. Okay. Seeing no public comment, I guess we're looking for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the Crescent City Water Wastewater Treatment Plant, uh, Facility Final Project Report. Move that we approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025 dash four seven, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Crescent City, authorizing the city manager to execute and submit a financial assistance application to the State Water Resource Control Board. I further move that we approve and adopt Resolution Number 2025 dash four eight, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Crescent City regarding wastewater project expenditures to be reimbursed by funds provided by the State Water Resource Control Board.
I second that.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item number nine this evening is Measure S Street Improvements Fall 2025 Project Contract Award. Richter Jaeger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you again. So I started here almost three years ago, um, had the great honor of attending a, uh, the assessment of our road system, Crescent City. And the magic number was $39.6 million. Um, that was the proposed budget. At that time, excuse me, the city was through the Measure S program, was allocating $250,000 a year to, uh, large road improvement projects, as well as additional money for potholes and, and the like. After that report, uh, in the May and June, uh, council meetings in fiscal year in 2023, the city provided direction for $600,000 a year for large road projects in addition to the 250,000 roughly for asphalt potholes and minor repairs and sidewalks and, and striping. So since then, we've used Measure S money for Front Street. We've used Measure S money for, uh, some sidewalk projects. We use it for, uh, K Street and some other projects throughout the town. But, and then we also went through the risky time of what was going to happen with Pebble Beach. And so we kind of held back a little bit on the Measure S money, not knowing whether we're going to have to use some Measure S just to keep the thing going. But luckily through the uh, funding, funding provider from Senator McGuire, we're able to handle Pebble Beach. So no Measure S money was spent on Pebble Beach Drive. That being said, this is kind of a, uh, first of three exciting chapters because we're now going to utilize that Measure S project and start spending some real money on our roads. So the project before you, I'll be back a little bit of history here. So I'd made some cute little slides, actually not very cute, but Dave's. So I'd made some cute little slides, actually not very cute, but Dave's his version, just kind of give you an update, basically what we've done since twenty twenty five in terms of paving. So I'll go through the slide in pieces. But the orange work is some was a basically general fund and SP one project on A Street and what they call the Front Street or the B Street S curve. And so that was a combination concrete and asphalt project. That was about quarter million dollars. So we got that knocked out. But the A Street work, if you remember driving down, was patches. It was basically just very, very large patches. We got the road smooth, got it operational. So that was done in the spring of this year. The big like the big plan when kind of we took to council Measure S Committee and council to set aside this money in this last year's fiscal budget, fiscal year budget was to take on three plants, all roughly between five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, uh, which was the yearly projected, we kind of have one saved up, so that was the plan. The, we were able to take advantage of the situation, some money left over from the previous year budget, as well as having contractors in the area. So I prematurely knocked out the yellow areas, which was the Sixth Street uh, over by Dutch Brothers, as well as the Fifth, Sixth and Wendell section there. So those are the ones that are shown in yellow. So that was part of the three project master plan. And we've knocked those out without spending any of this large Measure S money. So therefore we have more money for large projects. So the project before you today is the red areas. And the initial estimate for that was five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The good news, so predominantly Eighth Street, the areas of French Hill, Hamilton, some areas downtown at Fifth Street, and then the the area over Seventh Street by Danco, as well as the area by Cheko Federal. So those are the little red areas on the map. That was the projects slated for this year. The good news is that that project came in below major estimate. So my major's estimate was five hundred and thirty five thousand. Tidewater gave us a nice price at four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for ST Roads, uh, who has do it, who does have, you have probably heard of them in a while, but they do have local connections with this town. Um, they were the contractor that did the one oh one project a few years ago on the old eighty eight improvements. Um, they're quite capable, they've got grinders, they've got pavers, and so they came in at three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. So there's one way of looking at it, saying yahoo, we saved money. But the the point of this isn't to save money on the six hundred thousand dollars. The point of it is that the the council and Measure S Committee and the citizens of of Crescent City have voted in us to spend this money to fix the roads. So instead of saying, hey, we got three hundred and three thousand dollars, you know, we saved some money. The point of it is let's, you know, fulfill our obligation to fix more streets. So the, let me back up one there, whoops.
So quick question.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 feel free.
So that's fulfilling all the requirements for the RFP, right? That we're we're not losing any quality, right?
No, no.
Because that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars less, that's pretty good.
Yeah, so less than my less than my number, yeah, they're about twenty two percent or twenty three percent less than Tidewater's number. Yes, which was surprising, since Tidewater's a local contractor. But the other way of looking at this in terms of because of this, without any a too technical, but you asked, realistically, there's a lot of area covered here, but if you look at the price differential, Tidewater owns the mix. Right? So they have a price, a competitive price, in fact, of what the asphalt is going to cost. They're also very busy this year. They're all over the state, so they were looking at, you know, how can they get to it this fall? I predict we'll get to it this fall. And the advantage by owning the asphalt is only about twenty thousand dollars. So when you look at it, it's that substantial, normally at a, you know, you know, tight unit cost bid, but it's not unreasonable for ST Roads to come in where they came in. Um, and we're appreciative of it. So what what happened, or or I looked at it and go, okay, we need to to fill this obligation. So what we've brought before you and also part of the requests that we're going to give you on this, the staff report is to, in addition to having giving authorization for the City Manager to sign the contract, we've also included a change order, contract change order number one. And that's the hashed area there in red. Sorry, so 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 what we did is extend Eighth Street. So change order number one adds additional twenty four thousand square feet, another four hundred forty nine, four hundred ninety tons of asphalt on Eighth Street. So that's kind of the red area, the eastern half of Eighth Street there. So not the best map, but I was trying to grasp the entire city for kind of give you an overview of what of what we've done or what's going to happen.
So Director Jaeger, then the the project's going to go on eight from A all the way down to H.
Correct, yes. Originally, the original plan, and that was a that was a slide I was trying to develop, and it was just becoming too too convoluted. So I tried to simplify it and give you an ugly slide instead, is initially the third of the three projects that were planned um, included the western eastern side of Eighth Street with the Northcrest project. And because of the unit costing, um, we got nice unit costs from ST Roads, um, was able to give them increases in mobilization and traffic control and stormwater and the grindout fees. And so they were happy having a larger project, obviously. And that's make the unit costing work better for them, so they're happy and we're happy. We got very nice unit costing, so we've gone out and added a hundred fifty two thousand, a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars to their base contract. So looking at the budget for the project therefore, the ST Roads big bid was at three hundred and forty nine thousand, change order, hundred, change order number one's a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars, asking for fifty thousand contingency gets us to five hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. Uh, that includes the striping, the grinding, the cleanup, the traffic control, all the components. So we're going to walk away, the way the bid set up to address your question, Councilmember Greeno, is they're being, they're charging us by the square foot of a grinded area at three inch depth minimum, and then we're paying them for the ass, we're paying the buy the ton for the asphalt off the tickets that are going into the hole. So there's really no way to, you know, X, X times Y is a square footage area and tons out of the truck. So there's really no way that we can go wrong. This is just basically straight paving. So the overall project is eighty thousand square feet, which sounds like a lot, and it is for Crescent City, and eighteen hundred tons of new asphalt in these in these road sections. And so these will be, for the most part, complete pavement. Um, there are some sections we're doing drivelines only just because we can't afford to do like flow line to flow line with the unit costs. I made some improvements in Eighth Street, so it'll be, it's nice to get that one ahead of schedule, so.
Eighth Street's a rough one, and there's going to be quite a few people that are happy that we're finally getting to it, so.
Yep. So that was one of the bad ones. The other two that are really horrible is maybe the two worst in the town is the, by Joe Hamilton, those two blocks there by the Masonic Lodge. Sorry, by Joe Hamilton, up by the Masonic Lodge, uh, between Ninth and Tenth. Those have some water issues where we actually go in there and place a five inch section by the Masonic Lodge, uh, just to hopefully that survives. I've worked there in the past, and it's just literally water right below the ground level there, so. So that gives us some room for extra extra tonnage and extra grind area if we go out there and feel we need it. But um, that's that's the plan for the current project. So that's what before you tonight. And just to kind of conclude our, the overall map and explain what all that color of this. We're going to do a couple more slides here. Uh, the project for the spring is the green area, so that dresses primarily Collector Street, which would be in this case mostly Fifth Street. Uh, there's a couple of blocks of Sixth Street that are hor- horrible. There's a block over by Safeway that's in pretty bad shape, so that's the initial plan for uh, the spring project. And depending on unit cost, maybe that project will grow also, but based on where we looked at originally. And then the other project that was part of Eighth Street and Northcrest is currently just Northcrest. And so right now, the budget for that is about half of what's required or is deemed unnecessary, but in addition to Northcrest, there are some issues with the sidewalks there, so we're anticipating adding some sidewalks in Northcrest, the area to the shopping center there by uh, by Main Trade Realty on the one side and Harbor Freight on the other side, those are all out of compliance, uh, plus the main tree area. So when we do that project, also try to do some work on those islands out there in Northcrest. But ideally, we grab more. That's the the object of that, is what the citizens of Crescent City have obligated us to do. And we're trying to fulfill that. So this is the first of three projects to be coming before you. Hopefully come get you back in February, March for another one and get you next summer for the third one that we can. So we've been doing lots of paving, you just told me the overall kind of the the nice thing about this slide is you do get a glimpse of the overall areas that we've impacted with paving. Um, not included in the slide is work that was done on Oregon and California Street last year, and we'll be doing a another block or about five, six hundred feet on Oregon Street in the next little bit to get that through as part of the Rosewood Housing Project. The developer there is obligated to half the street, so the city's going to take on the other half. So lots of payment going on, but it, yes, anyway. Leave it at that. The other thing that just to mention in terms of Measure S, Measure S obviously had money involved in the Front Street project. For those who remember the budgets on that project. And Measure S could very possibly be utilized as a we go to measure, we'll go to Measure S Committee and council for possibly using some Measure S funding from that third project to utilize for a contingency for the CDBG portion, if we do run long on that project. Because we're pretty tight on the, as as actually covered that contract last week or I don't know, it was two weeks ago, four weeks ago. So that was mentioned then that we might have to use Measure S. So if we do, I think if if we do need to use that money, then we are available to with our third project being on the small side to not upset the apple cart, so to speak. So the portion of the world that's going to be taken care of in the Measure S, for the Front Street project coming up, is that little on the bottom right hand corner, the purple area there. That's on the books as well, and that is under under contract.
And that's our last little bit of Front Street.
That's our last little bit of Front Street.
Yeah, exciting. Uh, I just want to say something about Measure S and just thank the public again for their constant partnership with us on this one percent. One percent goes to this and and it it's 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 repaving our roads. It's it's maintaining this great infrastructure that we've been given for the future. And it's a big deal. So thank you again, Crescent City, for partnering with us, and we look forward to continuing to do great things with that money in the future.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Do we have any public comment on this item? Thank you, Director Jaeger. Okay, we're looking for a motion.
Um, do you want to do it? Go ahead, absolutely.
I move that we approve plans and specifications for the Measure S Street Improvements Fall Twenty Twenty Five and approve and authorize the City Manager to sign a construction contract with ST Roads Construction, Inc., for the Measure S Street Improvements Fall Twenty Twenty Five Project. Approve and authorize the City Manager to sign contract change order number one for additional paving repairs on Eighth Street and authorize the City Manager to approve and sign future change orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed fifty thousand and find that the project is categorically exempt per SEQA Guidelines Class One fifteen three oh one A, existing facilities and Class Three of fifteen three oh three dash new construction.
Right, and I will second that.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
And Mayor Altman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number ten, Fred Endert Full Roof Replacement Project Notice of Completion.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this is a real, just a real brief happy story. Uh, this is notice of completion for another project. We finalized one. Uh, the project that we're referencing, obviously, is a pool roof replacement that has officially been completed. Um, I did want to just basically make re re to re to bring back the the bid results from this project. Initially, we had set aside a hundred thousand dollars for Measure S and a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars from General Fund. Um, Red Sky Roofing, as we call it, Red Sky, Inc., came in at a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. You know, once again, as to reference Jason or Councilman Green, Greenhouse comment about quality. You know, we got a quality project, we got the roof that was specified. And, you know, you look at the other three numbers there and you realize we got a nice little bargain out of the out of the deal. And how does that impact us? Because if you look at that two eighty three number, that was above our initial budget entirely. So you've got to look forward and thank the uh, the pricing you got that we received on that project. Um, as mentioned previously, just to reuse a slide, you know, the city took advantage of the two week, three week shutdown. It wound up being to do some additional repairs inside the building. And yes, those are not seagulls on the roof, those are fake seagulls to scare away the real seagulls. Anyway, the so the funding is mentioned before, the general fund, a hundred, I might, uh, sorry about the formatting, it's kind of odd how it goofed on at this point. But but anyway, uh, the general fund was the hundred and seventy five thousand, Measure S, a hundred thousand dollars. The total price, including the change order, was two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and sixty two dollars and which was twenty five percent under our budget. So happy for Measure S, we're returning seventy two thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars back to Measure S Fund for other projects to be delegated by Measure S Committee and council. So thank you to Red Sky, thank you, Council, for putting the money and look forward to a long life roof at the pool. Tell the next one, project that is not a roof. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I I don't have any questions, but I have to say that roof looks beautiful. The the metal roof, it looks real nice. I don't know, is it is it noisy inside when it rains, though? What is there a sound? Is there any difference?
I honestly don't. I I don't know, I don't wouldn't think so, but, you know, I, yeah, I, we will let you know.
That's the only thing I can think of, that I'd be a negative, but it looks beautiful.
Sir, that, now, in fairness, I had a swim cap on, so and I was swimming, so who knows what I was hearing. But I actually come to think of it, uh, the one day we had where it rained pretty hard, I was actually doing laps in the pool, and I don't recall any, uh, actually, it was interesting because I had to remind myself it was raining by looking out the windows, so.
Right.
Tech, I don't know if that's too technical, but according to me, it's pretty sound.
Awesome, that's great to hear. Yep, very good.
Well, I'm glad to hear the noise problem was fixed. Now we just need an owl. Any public comment? Anything else from the council? Look for motion, please.
Mayor, I move that we authorize the City Manager to sign and file the notice of completion for the Crescent City Fred Endert Municipal Pool uh, roof place replacement project.
I second.
Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Director Jaeger. Agenda item eleven is U.S. Economic Development Administration Grant Acceptance to Update the Twenty Nineteen to Twenty Twenty Four Delano County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Altman, members of the council. So some more exciting news and news that will hopefully reap economic benefits as we as we move our way into the future. So part of economic development for each uh, each county is to have a regional SEDs. And with that, there are, uh, there are funding opportunities that come with it. So SEDs is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Uh, the city actually acquired a grant for our last one back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And in partnership with the county and the harbor, we created our last regional SEDs. And there are five year documents, so that was thousand nineteen to twenty twenty four. December twenty twenty four is when it officially ended its timeframe. Now, we have had an extension, so if there wasn't the opportunities between now and then, we would have been eligible. But in two thousand and twenty four, in August of two thousand and twenty four, we actually applied for an additional grant so we could update our SEDs. So we actually applied for two. So through the EDA, there was the SEDs grant, and then there was also a uh, a, an add on to our downtown specific plan is is what we requested. And at that point, we'd, we had heard back favorably from uh, from EDA that both were going to possibly be approved. However, there was a pause in federal funding for quite some time, and so both those were paused. Uh, EDA has now reached back out to us and stated that they are ready to award our regional SEDs. That's the amount of seventy six thousand dollars. I would pay for a consultant to come in and and redevelop this regional economic development strategy and also pay for some economic development type software to really do a nice in-depth market analysis. So that's, that's really what's before you as far as the scope of work. Does require a thirty percent uh, match. And so that equates to roughly over thirty four thousand dollars, but that can come in in kind costs. So we're going to track our city time, county's going to do the same, and the harbor and and each of us have committed a certain amount, the city taking the lead. We've committed to fifteen thousand dollars in staff time. The county has contributed to a little over twelve thousand and staff time, a little over a thousand dollars in rental facilities. Like we use this building or whatnot, we'll keep track of uh, of those different costs and fees. And then the harbor has has committed to a little over six thousand dollars in staff time as we work our way through. So as the government is currently shut down right now, um, that might delay this slightly, but we do anticipate we can get this action by the council. We'll get all of our award information uploaded into their into their system. And then And then once, uh, they're back open, we're looking at getting the official, uh, go ahead on this. And then we would put it together in RFP, get our consultant, and again, be working hand in hand with the county and harbor on this particular project. Our other project, although it has not been denied, is still in kind of a middle ground type of area where they said they're not going to fund it in this year's funding, but they are moving it forward into next year's funding to be eligible. So again, that's not, uh, it's not a denial, but it's not an acceptance of the additional, I want to say it was approximately three hundred thousand dollars for additional funding for our downtown uh, plan and to get actual designs and whatnot. So we're still very hopeful on that side. But this will be another needed piece and continue to move us in the right direction when we talk about regional economic development.
Thank you, city manager. Are there any questions for the city manager from the council?
And we'll just give credit to Bridget Lacy, who has been the driving force beyond, behind this grant application and the over the future downtown, uh, one as well.
Um, I was glad to hear that the thirty percent can be, uh, in kind work. That's huge.
Yeah, certainly very nice. And as we track our time, uh, it's a lot of, uh, it's a lot of work to actually get these, uh, completed. And so us spending fifteen thousand, I don't think is going to be hard when you start to look at Martha's time and Linda's time and mine and Dave's.
Well, I just have to say thank you to Bridget Lacy again for pulling this one out. Um, she has done so much. She has pulled so much money into the city to, for the benefit of the people here. And it's, it's a huge, huge deal. Would, would you like to take this one, Candace, or do you want me to take it?
I move that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement and any amendments thereto for E D A funding in the amount of seventy six thousand dollars to update the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty four Del Norte County C E D S. And we approve and adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash forty six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City amending the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six budget of the City of Crescent City.
And I'll second that.
Do we have any public comment for agenda item eleven? Not seeing any public comment. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, agenda item number twelve is alternate procedures for public notice. Want to hear a staff report from City Attorney Rice?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so as a local government agency, the city is often required to, uh, publish public notices of various events, whether it's a public hearing or adoption of an ordinance, various things like that. Um, as you're aware, about three weeks ago or a month ago, we were informed that our, uh, local newspaper was going to be no more, or at least so we thought. So, um, as staff, we began, um, planning for how we were going to issue our public notices without a newspaper, um, in Del Norte County. Um, luckily, the state law provides for alternative procedures. Most often it's, um, posting in three public places. Sometimes it's publishing in the nearest newspaper of general, general circulation, which would be in Humboldt County. Um, but it does generally provide alternative procedures. Um, however, when we were looking through our municipal code, which has been put together and adopted all during the time which we had a newspaper of general circulation um, in the city, in the county. Um, so it's just standardized that process. Um, so with this event and in thinking that we were not going to have such a newspaper to publish in, um, I begin drafting an ordinance in order to allow us to use that alternate procedure that's already provided in state law and to make it part of our code as well. So the ordinance that I drafted, its provisions basically say that if there is no newspaper of general circulation currently being circulated in Del Norte County, then we can follow, um, state law procedures, which are either public posting or in the neighboring county. Um, we did have some other, you know, originally we planned on having an urgency ordinance and some other things, but, um, now that we've been told the newspaper has been fought and it has published, it has published legal notices and is currently, I believe, still technically a newspaper of general circulation. Um, we're just going to move forward with our standard ordinance. Um, and that's what's, or the standard ordinance process with the, you know, two meetings and everything. So that's what's before you this evening.
Thank you. Our plan B, right?
We are getting prepared.
Anything from the council?
Well, I'm probably losing brain as the night draws on. I'm not real clear what the alternative is. Is it that you would post it on the city website or? Or what, I didn't, what, what's the, what is the alternative?
There's two, and it depends on what state law says. So for the various types of notices we have to publish, it varies in the way they phrase what the alternative procedure is. Um, but so most often it would just be posting in three public places, which we would do the library, city hall, and here at the Flynn Center. Um, we would also post on our, our website as well.
Okay.
Do we also do postings on Facebook as well?
Not necessarily for an ordinance. Uh, council were to direct it, we could. Uh, but it's more for public events and anything like that, but it's not part of our standard ordinance.
Okay. It's not something that we would need to put in a city ordinance to do and correct.
We have flexibility in this. Um, actually, the ordinance doesn't require putting it on the city website, but we would, we would also do that. We're preparing to do that. Um, just to make it easy for everybody, but, um, it's not a requirement of the law. So I didn't want to add additional uh, potential complications, but, um, usually for Facebook, we've done ones that are, you know, when we're really trying to pull people in, like for maybe the business assistance loan program or certain other hearings that are a little more high profile, we bog our social media down with too much, you know, legalese. No one's going to read it anymore.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it also says, uh, nearest publication, but makes sense to have three local
Yeah.
posting places where it's easier for everyone to see it.
Anything else from the council?
No.
Any public comment? Thank you, City Attorney Rice.
All right. With that, I'll move that we waive full reading and read by title only and introduce ordinance number eight, five, eight. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding section one point zero four point zero eight zero, public notice alternative, alternate procedure to chapter one point zero four, general provisions of title one, general provisions of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
I will second.
Clerk, please, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Altman?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to our city council items, reports, concerns, and referrals. Do any of the council members have something to report out on?
Um, I will just try to be brief, uh, to keep you and the public aware of what we do behind the scenes. Um, I have been, uh, uh, I'm just a few of the things. I volunteered Friday as part of my Chamber of Commerce duties associated with this city council position. I volunteered at the, to register, uh, members for the Sea Cruise on Friday. I'm continuing to volunteer my time and my interpretation expertise to the Tolawa Cultural Trail Project. And looking forward to, uh, October thirteenth and the setting stone ceremony. Um, one of the most important things, you know, I think in our area to really pay attention to is our regional airport. And as such, uh, representing the council on the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. Um, we have one runway completely, uh, redone and it's, if I would call it beautiful, if you can call runway beautiful. And, um, I'm going to work with the city manager and others to see if we can get, uh, the airport manager to, uh, give us a brief PowerPoint presentation, maybe our meeting soon. So the public too could see just the dramatic difference it's made in our runway safety. Um, I'm also working with the chamber. I helped edit a, um, brochure. We're getting ready to have us the send off of our art tour for the Kamoni, Kamomi, uh, Boats of Hope, which is a project of local high school artists, uh, painting these miniature replicas of the, the Boat of Hope, the Kamomi. And that'll be in seven different locations throughout Del Norte County. Um, stay tuned for the grand opening of that. And I'm really, I'm really excited about that. And, um, inspired by the, uh, the dedication and the meaning that the students have put into this, uh, boat work. And I think it'll be another way to uh, share with the greater community outside of Del Norte, uh, the amazing things that are happening here with our, our sister city. And, um, also, uh, keeping me busy, but not city council related, but I also volunteered all day for the uh, partnership for performing arts. Uh, we had the Big Daddy, Big Bad Voodoo Daddy concert. It was a huge success. The reason I even bring that up is that I don't have the final numbers, but we are going to bring significant amount of funding from that concert to our Del Norte High School and, uh, Curry Harbor, excuse me, Brookings Harbor High School Music Programs. Um, I don't have the final amounts, but it'll be a significant, um, boost to both those music programs.
Thank you, Candace. Do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Okay, that, uh, moves us on to legislative matters. Do you have anything tonight? City Attorney Rice?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the dreaded city manager report. Hey, I did good. I didn't do any jokes. I've been telling that.
Oh, no, I appreciate that, Mayor. Always, uh, I will actually keep it, uh, keep it short. So, uh, Fritz, if you can just bring up that, uh, that PowerPoint that I have prepared. It's only about a hundred slides. We should be out of here in about an hour. Technical difficulties requested by the mayor. Uh, no, actually, uh, this, it is pretty short tonight. It's not been working hard. You saw a lot of, uh, a lot of our work come out tonight and some of the various reports and whatnot. The treatment plant and all the work that, uh, Director Jaeger and his team have been doing with the Measure S Street Projects. And we got the the Tolawa, uh, Cultural Trail piece and, uh, the Front Street Project, right? It's all starting to come together. So definitely, uh, wanted to, to plug a couple of the upcoming events. The setting of the stone ceremony, that's going to be open to the public. It's at the Culture Center. I believe it starts at five o'clock, I think. Either five or five thirty. Five thirty, there we go. Just making sure that everybody else is still awake in the audience. So.
I'm sorry, birds are welcome, right?
And, uh, and if you can RSVP though, because, uh, we do want to kind of get a, a gauge on the number of people that'll be there. So five thirty on October thirteenth. And then we have the pump track, uh, event. So that one's on Monday, the thirteenth. But before that is this coming Saturday. So our pump track event, which we plugged earlier on that one, the event is actually from eleven to two. Uh, with registration starting at nine o'clock. So nine to eleven registration, it's for kids, uh, up to eighteen and starting age is is three. Five and under. Five and, uh, five and under is a, is an age group. Excellent. That will be a lot of fun. I'm sure that'll be very cute as well. Uh, so, so all kids welcome, uh, under eighteen and should be a great event. And so we're really looking forward to that with partnership with Trail Alliance. We have a fire event, which was talked about as well, uh, earlier today. And so uh, that one is at Home Depot on the eleventh. And then we have our pool event, which is October twenty fifth. And so that'll be a pool carnival and that one is two to five for the carnival piece of it, followed by a spooky swim. So should be, uh, should be fun. And then, uh, Councilmember Tinkler, you mentioned the Boat of Hope. And so the city was part of the original seven uh, agencies that were part of the Go for the Gold Initiative, which now has this last piece, which will be this Boat of Hope replica for that. And ours will be showcased at our pool. So, uh, that should be some good exposure for the pool as well as right across the street from the Kamomi mural and all of those things. So some good stuff on that. And then Councilmember Tinkler, I heard you mentioned possibly a request for a presentation from, uh, our airport director in regard to the project. Do we have consensus direction from the council on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Make it happen. Perfect.
And if there are, uh, are those watching that don't write quite as fast like me, where would they see the schedule?
Glad you asked, Mayor. We, uh, our new recreation director is also in charge of our, uh, of our social media. And so you should be able to go to our social media and find posts on all of those things as well as the, uh, city website.
Cool. Does this look like some fun event? Okay. We're moving on to adjournment. I'm going to adjourn the regular meeting of the city council, the City of Crescent City um, to Monday, October twentieth at six P M. Right here at the Flynn Center. Thank you, everyone.